Five. Oh, there goes Councilman Kevin Arrow. We have all six council members on. It is now 6:30, so I am going to call this public hearing into session. For the record, are we recording? I'm sorry, you see John Draper?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you, John. All right, so for the record, the purpose of this public hearing is to solicit citizen input regarding a resolution that would authorize the City of Torrington to undertake programs and projects authorized under the Connecticut City and Town Development Act under Chapter 114 of the Connecticut General Statutes. At this point, I would ask John or Carol to read the public notice into the record, please.
This, Mayor. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Councilmen of the City of Torrington will conduct a virtual public hearing on Monday, March 15, 2021, starting at 6:30 p.m. to solicit citizen input regarding a resolution that would authorize the City of Torrington to undertake programs and projects authorized under Connecticut City and Town Development Act under Chapter 114 of the Connecticut General Statutes. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order Number 7B, there is no physical location for this public hearing. Members of the public are encouraged to submit their comments in writing to the City Clerk's Office before 4:00 p.m. on Monday, March 15, 2021. Written comments that are sent electronically to cityclerk@torringtonct.org or by mail to the City Clerk's Office, 140 Main Street, Torrington, will be forwarded to the Board of Councilmen for their review and read aloud at the start of the public hearing. Public participation is encouraged via phone or online. Instructions are available at www.torringtonct.org/zoom. All interested parties are invited to participate and submit their comments. Dated at Torrington, Connecticut, the eighth day of March 2021, Carol Anderson, City Clerk.
Okay, thank you. So before I ask for the presentation of comments, Rista, did you want to just put into record your memorandum about Chapter 114?
Sure, I'll read it into the record.
She's frozen. All right.
... in Connecticut. This determination is based on high unemployment and poverty, aging housing stock, and low or declining rates of growth and job creation, population and per capita income. This designation highlights the need for the city to incentivize both commercial and residential development, job creation, and expansion of transportation infrastructure that will support an increase in our tax base. The Connecticut City and Town Development Act provides municipalities certain powers to incentivize economic development and address persistent unemployment, blight and negative conditions that erode the financial position of the city. These powers are detailed in Connecticut General Statute 7-480 through 7-503. By declaring that parts of the city contain blight and deteriorated conditions, and that the city was substantially benefit from commercial and/or residential property rehabilitation or construction, these statutes allow the city to exercise these powers contained therein for various development projects. No action in the exercise of any powers granted under the provisions of these acts will be undertaken without the approval of City Council, which approval shall be means of a separate resolution. This declaration automatically terminates in five years and can only be renewed by adoption of a subsequent resolution authorizing renewal. Approval of the attached resolution establishes the necessary findings to make such a declaration.
Thank you. All right, so with that said, for the record, I'll turn it back to our City Clerk's Office. Do we have any comments that were submitted?
Yes, Mayor, we have one from Torrington resident Tom Candefor, which has been forwarded to council, but I can read it into the record now.
Please.
This was an email dated Sunday, March 14. As the Development Act allows a broad range of authorities involving all types of properties, I have some questions on how it is intended to be applied in Torrington. One, while the need for revitalization is clear, what is the urgency of choosing this method, and would it replace or be used in conjunction with other strategies? Two, as you are well aware, Torrington has downtown development, incentive housing, and opportunity zones, all with defined areas and goals. In implementing the act, will specific areas of focus be identified with some prioritization based on potential benefits or on a case-by-case basis? As Rista Malanca indicated in her memo to the council, the act requires that specific planned actions be approved by the legislative body, which is City Council, by a separate resolution. Section 7-484 also allows, should Torrington delegate some powers, the governing body of such designated government body or nonprofit corporation approve the action. Does this bypass the council? See the attached wording of Section 7-484. The act, Section 7-488, allows the city to make loans under well-defined conditions. This appears risky and beyond the functions of city government. Can this be explained?
Thank you.
That's our only comment.
Thank you. So I do have a response to the questions that were asked, but I think I'll hold off and submit those into the record after the motion is made on this so that we can engage in discussion on each of those items under the regular council agenda, if that's okay with everybody else. So if there are no other comments from the public for the public hearing, I am going to close this public hearing in the traditional form. I will call it three times. If there are no other comments, I will close the public hearing. I will close the public hearing. I declare this public hearing closed, and for the record, it is 6:30, 7:00 p.m. I'm going to move right into the regular meeting of the City Council and WPCA. For the record, today is Monday, March 15, 2021. Participating via Zoom are Councilwoman Anne Rowett, Councilwoman Frank Rubino, Councilwoman Sharon Wagner, Councilwoman Drake Waldron, Councilwoman Paul Cavanaro, and Councilwoman David Oliver. Item one on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 143213, authorizing the City of Torrington to undertake programs and projects authorized under the Connecticut City and Town Development Act to assume and exercise as appropriate all the rights, powers, obligations, and privileges under said act, and authorizing such other actions as may be necessary to implement the purpose of the act.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilman.
Lucrentino.
Second, Waldron.
Thank you. So I have a second, a motion and a second, and I'll open the floor for discussion. And if the council would just entertain my responses to the questions, and I greatly appreciate Mr. Candefor's diligence, can always count on him to attend and participate in our public hearings, and I hope other people will learn from his example. So his first question, while the need for revitalization is clear, what is the urgency of choosing this method, and would it replace or be used in conjunction with other strategies? So in response to that, the powers that are enumerated in Chapter 114 will provide the city with additional options that are not already available through other municipal powers, statutorily driven, or state and federal programs. The urgency of choosing these powers lies in the opportunities that may be presented to us as we work through a number of foreclosure actions relative to blighted properties in Torrington, or consider the future use of abandoned and blighted properties legislation that we recently implemented relative to the Yankee Peddler Inn, or engage in discussion with property owners like NIDIC and/or IRG regarding the remediation and disposition of their properties. These statutes will allow us to stand in the role of a developer if it is deemed appropriate, or to finance rehabilitation or improvements to properties that we may acquire through foreclosure or gift. Even in working with the Torrington Development Corporation, we want to be in a position to be able to offer options that are specifically designed to facilitate development of the properties and strengthen our ability to recover any of the costs advanced or expended. With the strategies itemized in this statute, we can be more involved in the planning, design, financing, construction, leasing, rehabilitation, and general development of properties. And one example of how these strategies can be funded is by utilizing blight fines that have been collected and/or EPA revolving loan funds that are being repaid. We can establish a reserve fund that can be used to finance, purchase, or develop the properties. Due to my jumping deck. The second question, as you are well aware, Torrington has downtown development, incentive housing, and opportunity zones, all with defined areas and goals. In implementing the act, will specific areas of focus be identified with some prioritization based on potential benefits, or will this be a case-by-case basis? The use of these statutes will be applied on a case-by-case basis. Most often, of course, a strategy with focus can be developed, especially as it relates to the opportunity zone, the enterprise corridor zone, incentive housing zones. So what do we know? The opportunity zone and enterprise corridor zone utilize tax incentives, both state and federal, and the incentive housing zone utilizes zoning strategies. These statutes will add another layer of incentives that will pave the way for the city to be a partner with a developer. Question three, as stated in Rista Malanca's memo, the act requires that the specific planned actions be approved by the legislative body, which is the City Council, by separate resolution. Section 744 also allows that, should Torrington delegate the powers to a governing body of such designated government body or nonprofit, the question is, does this bypass the council? This would never bypass the council. The council must make a decision on any undertaking under this statute, and the delegation of any power or authority can only happen if the council, after a public hearing, determines that it's in the best interest of the city to do so. I don't see us utilizing this statute for that purpose. However, should a future council, because once this statute or this election is made, it is good for five years. So if, in the event, there's a future council that decides it would be beneficial, if you look at the language in Article 7-486, the delegation or authority can be limited and restricted, as may be appropriate, to assure that carrying out of the purpose of this chapter. And then I think his fourth question was whether or not the article, Section 7-48, does allow the city to make loans under well-defined conditions. His concern is that it's risky and beyond the function of city government, and he's looking for an explanation. So much in the way that the federal and state government have provided remediation and development incentives, like the EPA revolving loan fund, our small cities loan programs through the CDBG grants, and the, and DECD grants, such as Arts Create Place Making, the refunded or repaid funds can be recycled and loaned back out. So under this scenario, I would see us undertaking a planned reuse of any of those funds that qualify. And as I mentioned earlier, reserve funds, such as our blight fines or zoning enforcement fines, can also become a funding vehicle for future lending. Usually, these steps, these types of loans would be short-term, such as a bridge loan that would carry a developer through a pre-development phase of a project. And of course, if we were to undertake any kind of financing or rehabilitation work or design work with a developer, the council would determine what amounts would be loaned and what the terms of the loan would be, such as interest, the length of the term, or security that they'd be seeking. So I think, based on the research that was provided to us and the research that Rista has done, Vic and myself included in reading this chapter, do think that this is that extra measure of development strategies that would benefit the City of Torrington as we move our way through the five or six foreclosures that we have for blighted properties, as we work with TDC on the Yankee Peddler Inn, and as we identify any potential redevelopment opportunities or partnerships that we can engage in, this statute in this chapter would be tremendously helpful. So I'll open the floor to other questions. If there are no questions. Yeah, Paul, you're muted.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get some clarification on what would be, I guess, Section 1? Item, I'm not sure how you break these down, but Section D, okay, so it's 1 Delta. Private enterprise is not meeting such need for employment, housing, the reduction of blight and deterioration, or the renovation, or the construction of commercial residential property in the city. And why is that, why is that, why is that clause in there? What is the purpose of that clause?
So I'm not sure what clause of the statute that you're looking at.
Yes, it's part, how are we describing these? It's Section 1, Paragraph D, Delta.
Of, can you tell me which section of the statute? Is it Section 43, 44, 45, or 6? Do you know which section?
No, you know what? Okay, so I'm looking at, I guess, a prior document, and that's my bad.
No, that's fine. So if you can repeat, if you could repeat the clause that you're asking, why is it in there?
Yeah, it just says, "Conditions," let me see, "It's preceded by conditions of blight and deterioration exist in parts of Torrington, the city, and it would substantially benefit from the renovation, rehabilitation, or construction of commercial residential properties within its territorial limits." And then the next bullet point says, "Private enterprise is not meeting such needs for employment, housing, reduction of blight and deterioration, or renovation, rehabilitation, or construction of commercial residential properties." I'm not, why does that need, I'm not sure what the purpose of that clause is in this document, that's all. And if this is not even the correct document, then fine, I'll stand down. I thought this was part of what we're getting at here.
So I think it's the resolution that you're looking at.
Yes.
So, okay, good, yeah. So that clause is in there because the statute is clear that when a legislative body, the City Council, in this case, makes this declaration, you actually have to state these declarations in your resolution. And each one of those bullet points is pertinent to the City of Torrington, and based on our experience, based on, you know, what's, what's occurred over the past several decades, and what we see on the horizon, I think that each one of those declarations does apply and would certainly demonstrate to the council the reason we should be adopting this chapter.
But is that, is that standard language?
It is.
To say, "Private enterprise is not meeting such need for employment, housing," I mean, it strikes me as odd.
Well, Rista, go ahead.
So, you know, when I look at these incentives, you know, if you compare Torrington, you know, you look at, like, say, I'm going to use Mystic, just because I'm familiar with their, they cannot keep a storefront empty. They have a waiting list of people who want to be in downtown Mystic, and that's an example of where private enterprise is really taking it over. There's not much the city has to do to encourage people to want to be in downtown Mystic, because they want to be there. We're not quite there yet. So we need to help these businesses make their performers work so that they can be here, and they can come here. And so that's kind of how I interpret that, is saying that without incentives, you know, we wouldn't be able to get that development. You know, our hope is by giving these incentives and getting these developments in Torrington, we won't need them anymore, because we'll have so much demand, and so many people want to be here, that we no longer have to incentivize them to make those performers work. So that's...
That explanation makes sense to me. I just think the wording, it just, again, I'm probably making way too much of this. Probably nobody will even bother reading it, but it does, I just, I instinctively don't like language that is critical of private enterprise when I am very much a proponent for, for that system ultimately finding the most efficient and effective way of getting things done. So I'm certainly not going to, it's fine, move on. I just wasn't clear why that is, and it seems awkward to me and not completely in keeping with how I think about this, but that's fine. That's fine. I'm through, Mayor.
Thank you. I would add that that is actually lifted right out of the statute. I personally had a problem with using the word sanitary housing, but this is statutory language that's embedded in it.
Okay, I'm good.
I agree with you. Other questions from the council members? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and call the motion made by Councilman Rubino, seconded by Council Waldron. It is a roll call vote. So starting with Councilwoman
Yes.
Councilwoman Wagner. Councilman Rubino.
Yes.
Councilman Cavanaro.
Yes.
Councilman Waldron.
Yes.
And Councilman Oliver.
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you all. So I'll move right into Item 2 on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the public hearing held March 1, 2021.
I'll move.
Take it, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Oliver. Questions on the motion, or on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 3, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held March 1, 2021.
I'll move it.
I heard Councilman Oliver and seconded by Councilwoman Rowett. Are there questions on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 4, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting held March 1, March 4, 2021.
I'll move it.
I heard Councilman Waldron and Councilman Rubino. Questions on these minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll accuse myself.
One. All right, so I have two extensions. I have Councilwoman Rowett and Councilman Cavanaro. Item 5, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Casey McKenna as a regular member of the Parks and Recreation Commission to fill the remainder of a five-year term expiring in December 1, 2023.
So move.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. Seconded by Councilman Kevin Arrow. So I have a motion and a second. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Joseph Cortero as a regular member of the Board of Ethics to fill the remainder of a three-year term expiring September 1, 2023.
I'll move 6.
I heard Councilman Rubino, and I heard Councilwoman Rowett. Are there questions on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 7, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendations of the Parks and Recreation Superintendent and Purchasing Agent and authorize the mayor to award the contract for the 2021 fireworks display to Zimpele Fireworks Manufacturing Company of Newcastle, PA, for the total cost of $15,500.
Don't move.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Waldron. Questions on this motion?
Just a question. I am totally in favor of bringing the fireworks back. I think it's going to be a great thing to have. Just because I was just hearing earlier today that Europe is taking on an increasing cases again within this area. Later, I just want to make sure that we've got all our guidelines in place in case we have to do something a little bit more restrictive during that event.
So I know you're cutting out a little bit, Councilwoman. I'm assuming you're asking if there's a plan for a rescheduling or an exit strategy if we're not able to move forward with the...
I'm not even saying, I'm hoping you can hear me. I'm talking closer now. I think I'm all in favor of the fireworks, and I wasn't talking about anything other than a rain date for a change.
Oh, okay.
Just that we would have some guidelines in place, in case there is an increase or something going on, that we're ready to implement something different the night that that takes place.
So Brett Simmons is on the call. Brett, did you want to hop on and just give a little background on your backup plans?
Yes. Last year, obviously, you know, we're in a little bit worse of a predicament with COVID-19 than we are now. Hopefully, things are improving. We see that with the vaccinations. But the company that we worked with did establish deadlines where we could opt out. We'll be following those, you know, deadlines to see. And last year, we actually had to put a deposit down. We got a full refund as long as we met that deadline. This year, our hope is to go forward with the show. Yes, we probably might have to make some modifications, you know, whether it's, you know, it's going to be based on, you know, guidelines and, you know, following what the state's doing, CDC recommendations, you know, maybe we might have to look at, you know, people in cars. We might have to scale back and not do a carnival. So, you know, we're definitely going to be looking at all those, you know, points to try and make the best decision, but we would like to have a display. You know, we might have to look at satellite locations, but, you know, we're still months off right now. So I think we have time to, you know, figure those things out and see where we're at, you know, come July. But we definitely will take all the safety measures, you know, in place and guidance from the state, local officials, to figure out the best plan of action and, you know, make sure that we don't, you know, miss any deadlines where we're going to be, you know, stuck with, you know, losing a deposit.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much, and I know what you're going through to pull this all together. I just, I think as long as we have that information out to people, they can't misconstrue things and change the story around, and I'm really looking forward to seeing fireworks this year. So thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, other questions on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, looks like it's unanimous. Okay, 8. I'll entertain a motion in accordance with Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-474B, discussion and possible vote on the successor collective bargaining agreement by and between the City of Torrington and the Torrington Police Local 442. Council 4 asks me for the period from July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2023, as described in Attorney La Mer's letter dated March 5, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. Are there questions? I know the memo was attached, and I do believe I saw Attorney La Mer on the call. There she is waving me down. Questions on the terms of the negotiated contract? Which I do believe has been ratified by the union already. No questions? Then I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And I would just like to express my gratitude to HR Department and to our Torrington Police Local 442 for working so diligently these past few months to get this agreement accomplished. Moving on to item number nine. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to finalize and execute closing documents for the completion of the ground lease transaction covering property located at 100 Franklin Street to Penrose LLC.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Oliver. The floor is open to questions or discussion. I did provide to you a summary of the terms for the lease. And just for the record, this is the 100 Franklin Street property owned by the city of Torrington. Torrington will be serving as the landlord, Torrington Riverfront LLC of Penrose will be the tenant. The term is for ninety-five years. The date upon which it will, it will commence upon the date that the landlord is able to complete the environmental requirements under the rap and the PCB rap. And I think all the other relevant terms just highlighted what, what this lease will look like. Are there questions? Or comments? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, I oppose, ma'am.
Okay. So let the record reflect that Councilman Cavanaro was opposed, the motion does carry. So item ten, this is sort of a little housekeeping measure here. I do need the council to vote to adopt Resolution 143214, authorizing the city of Torrington to enter into a tax exempt exemption agreement for certain real property and improvements located at 100 Franklin Street, Torrington, Connecticut. The council had the public hearing and voted on this last week, but it is actually the resolution that I need approved as part of the closing package. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Waldron, are there questions? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, I oppose.
Okay, for the record, Councilman Cavanaro opposed the motion carries. Thank you. Item eleven, I'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 143 dash two one five, authorizing the city of Torrington to open a new account with Torrington Savings Bank, hereby designated Torrington Savings Bank as a depository for funds and agreeing to provide the other financial accommodations indicated in the resolution.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Waldron. Are there questions? I know Dan Farley is on the call with us, if you have questions, or Dan, if you wanted to add anything? At least I thought he was on the call with us. All right, hope I didn't boot him off. If there are no questions, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item.
We're twenty-two, and now there's only fifteen, mayor, but.
I know, I don't know what happened, there's a lot of people peeled off. Must have been the exciting thing, I know what it was, it was, I think our police department, our police union members were on the call.
Make sure that's it.
So, item twelve, I will entertain a motion to authorize the city to enter into a tax incentive agreement as described in the Economic Development Director's memo dated February ninth, 2021, for certain real property and improvements located at eight sixty-one Midgen Avenue, Torrington, Connecticut, in accordance with the city of Torrington's tax incentive policy.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett.
I'll second.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Rubino. Questions, I know Rista's on the call still, if you have questions?
This is Councilman Rubino. Rista, how do we, how do we define that that assessment's going to be two millions? Oh, sixty-seven, three forty.
So, the, the developer gives a site plan and the building plans to our assessor's office, and they come up with that estimate. So then what happens, so that's what we based our abatement on, based on the estimate. And then once it's complete, the assessor will go and verify that amount.
So a year one and year two, so in a sense, is this something like he's putting it all together and he's getting the abatement before he finishes? And then he, he needs a CO first, or what's the story?
What will happen is he'll get a CO in October one, you're following the abatement. His, his, his assessment will, he'll only be charged twenty-five percent of that increase, and then year two, he'll be charged fifty percent, then in year three, it'll be a hundred percent.
Okay, the, the only reason why I question is how many people will be employed there? I mean, did he say?
He did, I don't have the application written for me, I think it was about ten.
Okay. So it's approximately seventy-three thousand is what the abatement's going to be roughly for two years?
Yes. And you know, and that, the, the property value right now seems a little bit low to me. So, I mean, I think that's where you're, you see that, that, that amount. But it will go up to the, the two million dollars in value. And so that's a big increase for them to take all in that year one.
Right. Okay. That's it.
Okay, other questions for Rista on this? Then I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept Corporation Council's recommendation and authorize the mayor pursuant to CGS, section twelve, one, seven, nine, to release the lines described in Attorney Michelle's memo dated March fifteenth, 2021.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver. Questions on the motion? Or on the list? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item fourteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated in the list dated March fifteenth, 2021.
So moved. Rubino, move. Rubino, second.
Okay, I heard Councilman Waldron and seconded by Councilman Rubino. Any questions, or, yeah, any questions before I call the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, I'll entertain a motion by the city council acting herein as a WPCA to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the superuse refunds indicated in the list dated March fifteenth, 2021.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. Wagner. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the building department's report for January twenty twenty-one.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Waldron. Questions on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seventeen, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the mayor and members, oh, excuse me. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Rowett, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? On the call, I have Carol Anderson, anything from the city clerk's office?
No, I'm sorry, mayor, no, no news from the clerk's office.
No news is good news, right?
Yes, indeed.
Attorney Michelle, anything from the Corporation Council's office?
No, thank you, mayor.
All right, well then, let's move into item eighteen, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the mayor and members.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Our floor is open, since David's unmuted, we'll start with Councilman Oliver, anything this evening?
No, thank you, mayor.
Anything from Councilman Waldron?
No, not tonight, mayor, thank you.
Councilwoman Rowett?
No, I wondered why Councilman Rubino objected to us having any words.
It wasn't me, it was Oliver.
I heard ye, not ney.
I, I have nothing tonight, mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro?
Nothing tonight, mayor, thank you.
Councilman Rubino?
Okay, this is for the ordinance committee. Just take a look at that ordinance that we've been gelling over. We'll be meeting in two weeks about the warrants for the sidewalks and for the parks and stuff, the general statute seven, one, forty-eight. If you don't have that paperwork, I'll ask Carol if she could send it back out to both of the ordinance committee. I, I have it all printed out.
April fifth, right, because we're, it's.
Whenever the next, when's our next meeting?
April fifth.
Okay, so April fifth.
I'm just. Sounds good.
Carol, would you copy me as well, please?
Yeah, Vic, Vic, if there's anything that you see on it, I think it was vented, but just check it again for me. The highlighted stuff that Chief Baldwin put through. That way we can get it out to a public hearing in the future. That's it, mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
I'm just one question, did we get any further information on when we will go back to open sessions for the public?
So, yes, the executive orders that the governor is lifting, and I think he's lifting them as of the nineteenth, will afford us an opportunity to get back into city council chambers with, we are still limited in the number of people that we have based on social distancing, but we had the fire marshal go in and sort of map out, you know, what we can, what we have available so that the public can get in as well. And I would think that our April fifth meeting is probably when we'll be able to do all that.
That's great news, and I know that we don't have a huge crowd, but I, every once in a while, I get a call from one of our favorites, and you know, when are we going to be able to do that, so just getting it clarified is good. The only other thing I have is this week, there are two saints being honored, it doesn't matter what faith you have, but I wish happy shamrocks and good zeppelins to everyone this week.
Thank you, Councilwoman, oh, and there's my cue, the lights are out again. There being no further business before the board.
This, just wanted to let you know, Dan Farley was booted out.
He was.
Probably not, but he lost his own connection, his internet connection, so. And just if you wanted any questions for him, he's texting. I don't know. Put him on my phone, I guess.
Did anybody have questions for the councilman? I mean, for city treasurer, Dan Farley? I guess any's off the hook.
Well, formally apologizing on his behalf, how's that?
Good.
There you go, yeah.
Thank you. All right, now there being no further business before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Waldron, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you all. Enjoy the sunset.
Have a good night, everybody.
Already, good night.
Good night, everybody, stay safe.